All right, I think it's time to get started. Thank you all for being here tonight. I call to order the committee of the whole for the Urbana City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Hershey. Councilmember Colacetti?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop. Councilmember Wilkin. Councilmember Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. First order of business, we don't have any minutes to approve. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we are now at the point of presentations. We will have a presentation tonight introduced by Councilor Evans.
Thank you. During spring 2025, University of Illinois Architecture faculty and students worked with representatives of the city of Urbana and an owner of the Rose Bowl Tavern to create a design proposal for a new permanent public plaza on the site of the city-owned parking lot immediately north of the Rose Bowl. To inform their research and design proposal, the architecture students studied the Public Realm Study commissioned by the city of Urbana in 2022 and developed specific plaza design ideas that advanced recommendations offered by the city's Public Realm Study. The success of the Rose Bowl's activation of the city-owned parking lot over the last five years reinforces the potential for the city to invest and develop the public realm at this location, not only to serve the Rose Bowl's programming, but also a wide range of community stakeholders and year-round cultural activities. And with that, I would ask Professor Altshuler and his class to come up to the, yes, to the table, and you have the floor when you're ready.
And you'll need to pull the microphone almost uncomfortably close to your mouth.
Understood. Is that close enough?
If the switch is on.
Okay. How's that?
That's great. Thank you.
Let me see if the, all right, we'll make that work. So, good evening. Good evening, Mayor Williams. Good evening, council members. My name is Joseph Altshuler. I am Assistant Professor of Architecture at the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign, and I'm here with one of my graduate students, Jake Rhodes.
Hi, yes, my name's Jake Rhodes. I am a second-year graduate student in the Master of Architecture program at the University of Illinois.
Thanks so much for making time to hear our presentation. Before I begin, I do want to just like clarify as a preface that the ideas that we're going to share today, and this is for your benefit as well as the public's, these are ideas. I want to make clear, no one, this is not a commission. This is not intended to be built as shown. This is a purely speculative conceptual design proposal that we developed at the university in close conversation with a series of community stakeholders and partners, and I want to just like quickly acknowledge them from the beginning. Charlie Harris from the Rose Bowl. We also worked with the city of Urbana's Public Realm team, and also Chris Evans, as this is a site within Ward Two. But again, this is, this is just an idea, and the purpose of this presentation is to share our ideas to, we hope, inspire the public imagination around how we can make the public realm in Urbana second to none, something that other cities look to as a model. And also, I think there's also some low-hanging fruit here in terms of how the Rose Bowl has demonstrated through pop-up activations, how much civic love and energy there is, and I think the potential for a lot more, and things that serve a lot more than the Rose Bowl in the public realm. So just want to give that introduction, and I want to turn it over to my student who's going to share a little bit about the ideas that the students developed last spring.
Yes, so the beginning of the process, we started by looking at the Public Realm Study that was commissioned by the city, and something that really stuck out to us was the fact that there had kind of been drawn out this connection of alleyways and sidewalks to form this new pedestrian walkway throughout the city, something I think definitely could be utilized as a more safe and approachable form of transportation apart from cars. So at one end of that is the market at the square, which thanks to some recent investment has seen a lot of public activity with things like the farmer's market. And the other end of that, of that path is the Rose Bowl, so that we thought was a good idea to, to take this site and develop it into a second sort of anchor at the other end of this, at this walkway. So then the spaces in between can become smaller sort of cultural hubs for people to gather along the way. And then some more excerpts from this Public Realm Study. We found that in the analysis of the current amenities, although this spot was cited as by the people, one of their favorite spots according to a survey done within the study, it actually lacks some of the most amenities of the spots. So, again, just another, another opportunity to create a very beloved and a very, a very highly-attended spot and kind of bolster it and give the people more bang for their buck, I guess, in, in terms of investment.
And the students, in consultation with the community stake, stakeholders, developed, before we got into a kind of specific design, we kind of came to some agreement and consensus around some, let's say, guiding principles that were inspired by the Urbana Downtown Public Realm Study, but that we hope sort of take it a step further in thinking about strategies of urban design. One of them is about linking culture. As we know, like downtown Urbana has a lot of amazing existing cultural assets, but what's lacking is that like the city, thanks to in part the sea of parking lots that, that kind of separates some of those assets, is fragmented. So like, how can we think about public art, strategies of creative wayfinding that actually delineate a kind of continuity and guide movement between some of those existing cultural assets? Another guiding principle is amplify identity. So how can a design and sort of principles at the intersection of public art and architecture actually embody the plurality of Urbana citizens and its diverse cultures? And how can we create platforms that amplify local culture and voices? Kind of third of the four guiding principles is about inviting spontaneity. So on one hand, like we see with like the Rose Bowl's existing programs, like very specifically scheduled programming and events, but I think we're equally interested in how we can advance more spontaneous, impromptu, and informal gatherings as well, that spark curiosity, that are people-centered, that create a sense of place. And the fourth guiding principle is about seasonality, and how we can create through design a dynamic framework that can adapt and shift to different seasons, different times of day, different community groups, and in so doing, there can maybe be some adaptable or reconfigurable elements. And without getting too much in the weeds, I think one thing that we should say, or one, one observation that we've made as both citizens and scholars in and around Urbana is that there's actually no shortage of programming. What there is is a shortage of venues. And so how can we think about how between different times of day, different times of the year, and between different amounts of required infrastructure, we can actually make spaces that address all sorts of existing and future programming? So in the remainder of our time, we're going to zoom in on the site itself, which is the city-owned parking lot immediately north of the Rose Bowl, has kind of two sections. Currently, one of those sections, just to the, right here, just to the east, is the one that the Rose Bowl, of course, uses for their tent. But in this proposal, which I'll turn it back over to...
Are you trying to show us something?
I was trying to point. I don't know if you could see the cursor.
Oh, we don't, okay. All right, sorry. I was like looking, I'm like, okay.
All good. I had a cursor here, but if that's, okay. All, all I was trying to point out is, I think, I think something most of us know is that right now, this sort of like eastern section of the city-owned parking lot, north of the Rose Bowl, is the one that's activated with the tent. And in this proposal, and I'm going to turn it back over to Jake to, to get into some of the details, we're proposing, thinking about the whole city-owned parking lot, we're proposing that, what, what would it mean, what benefits would it give the city if it became a permanent public plaza, and how that also integrates with a connection to Main Street via Goose Alley and Main Street. And I should also say, and again, I think this is something that probably many of you know, there are about 4,500 parking spots in downtown Urbana, according to both the, I think, a 2008 parking study and the 2023 Public Realm Study. There's documentation that many of those parking spots, up to maybe even a third of them, are often underutilized, and there's only 46 parking spots that are in question in this proposal. All right, so I'm going to turn it back over to Jake, who's going to talk a little bit more specifically about our schematic design in the time we have left.
Yeah, so like Professor Altshuler had mentioned, the idea here is to take something that is very minimally used and expand it and kind of weave it into the fabric of Urbana in a sense. So by expanding the boundaries beyond what the Rose Bowl is using, we can kind of turn it from a painted surface into something that truly is incorporated into the local architecture. So by doing that, we kind of have these three points or three radius. The first one you can see, kind of in the center of the site, is used as kind of the turning point or the pivot from the alley into what is the plaza. The second one is the sort of loiter or hangout space around the Rose Bowl, and then the third is a proposed stage that could be used both formally for concerts, as the Rose Bowl currently does, or informally, just as a hangout spot, a meeting place, you could put a chair up there, whatever you want to do. So here's kind of a rendering of the, the overhead perspective. So something we're really trying to, to tackle here is to create a visual identity, and just some keynotes of things that could be incorporated as sort of an identity for the city. So incorporate and sort of maybe come up with ideas for graphic strategies and wayfinding strategies that could be used elsewhere to kind of give the city of Urbana the identity that I think it so deserves.
And just so everyone's oriented, you can see this is the sort of north elevation, this is the north elevation of the Rose Bowl, and this would be Race Street, sort of on the right side of the rendering, and Water Street over here, just so everyone's oriented.
And you can scroll, yeah. So this would be the approach from the alleyway. I think the alleyways have a great opportunity and are currently a little underutilized, just in that at night, they get a little dark, and they're not exactly, I didn't know that you could even go down them when I first moved here. So I think by having this, this radius of circles that expands into the alleyway as well as the overhead lighting, it allows you to really feel like, okay, I am welcome here, and, and you want to chase the center of the circles, you want to find where they go. And then this is if you're exiting the alleyway, kind of turning left towards the plaza. So you're kind of rotating around that first pivot point, and now you can see kind of the full scope of what the plaza is. And again, you can see, we're trying to reclaim some of the hardscape with some green space, open that back up to people. It also helps cool the ground, you know, provides a little more life. We've also incorporated some, some shading, permanent shading, as well as some trees to, again, try and, try and give what is an otherwise completely open lot some...
I have a motion to extend time.
Yeah, can I motion for three minutes? Would three minutes be okay?
Of course.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Will those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, we'll wrap up promptly.
Thank you. And then this is, again, kind of just barely turning your view a little more right, so we have some, some built-up stadium seating, which allows for, if there is a concert, to have maybe a more elevated view, to, if anybody's been to a concert, you know the further back you get, the harder it is to see, as well as just some days you feel like sitting at the top steps, some days you feel like sitting at the bottom, even if there is no concert, just giving flexibility to people. Last, you can kind of see again, some more of these strategies, the stage off to the right, you've got some seating which could be movable as well. Again, we're trying to give people sort of building blocks to let them shape what they want to do with the space without prescribing too much. Again, this is all speculative and just trying to give people a forum in which to use to support programming of all types.
So I think like in conclusion, like this, this design strategy is about different, different radiuses, different spheres of influence, whether you're like sort of closely involved in a performance that's happening a stage, or whether you're in some of the peripheral areas hanging out, there's sort of multiple centers and multiple opportunities for things to happen simultaneously, when they're smaller things or bigger things to kind of take over the site in a more festival atmosphere. And through, I think, a kind of close relationship between like studying the surface through both vegetated and sort of soft paved surfaces, as well as like built-up seating areas, to create a kind of oasis or respite that is like really dedicated to the public realm in every way. So we'll stop here, we're welcome, welcome your questions. And again, I just want to clarify, this is an idea. We're hoping to start a conversation. This is not intended to be built exactly as it's shown, nor is there any commission or plans to do so. So thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you. Do we have questions? Um, Mayor?
Well, first off, I want to say thank you to, to both Joseph and Jake, and shout out to our Art Connoisseur Councilmember Evans for, for bringing this to the forefront. So a couple of quick questions, one statement prior to, as Joseph mentioned, this is simply an idea, folks. Speculatory idea, concept, great idea, awesome concept, but just that. But I am interested in knowing, what, what's the, how does Rose Bowl feel about this? I assume, you know, conversations have been had, they've seen this, so what, what's been their approach?
I don't want to put words in their mouth, but we worked with them along the process. We were, we actually kicked off the process with them. We sort of invited them to sort of charge the students with some priorities and direction, and then we invited them in at the 50% and 100% milestone of the semester to offer feedback and, and constructive criticism. And again, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but, but overall, they were really excited about it, I think, like really captivated with the potential of how it could support, sort of bring what they already do well to a new level, and also put them, put their location as something that is, to use their words, I think, a public square, that this is something that isn't just for the Rose Bowl, and not just meant to serve their business, but to think of the space adjacent to their business as a public square where lots of different constituents and communities from the city of Urbana can come together. And I think that's the part that they're most excited about, and I think the part that most aligns with our ambitions.
Can I just, thank you for that. Can I just get a few, a follow-up?
Keep, keep going.
Keep going.
I don't know, we got a lot of stuff to do tonight.
That's true, and, and I don't want to be the reason we keep going, I'm sorry. But was any other businesses contacted and approached about this, and if so, what was that feedback? And again, just...
For sure. So for the purposes of this one semester study, we did not have the opportunity to engage with other businesses, and our hope is that, you know, if there is excitement from the city, if there is continued excitement from the public, that, you know, this is just the very first step, that one of my roles as both an educator and a practicing architect is to really embrace and elevate community engagement as part of a design process. And our hope is to sort of continue that process incrementally, and to bring more and more voices into the conversation and kind of into the feedback, so that, you know, this is, again, the point of this is not for it to be the Rose Bowl's project. We started with them because they're the ones who have taken the risk thus far in activating that public space, but the intent is very much that this would serve other businesses all adjacent to the space as well.
Mary Alice?
Yeah, adding to Deshaun's question, I was wondering, so Bunnies is the other company that would be directly impacted by this. And to really have two questions about that. A, were they part of this process? And B, I noticed that there was part of the circle encompassed some of their parking lot, and so I wanted to know if you could speak to that.
For sure. And yeah, right up front, we have not yet engaged Bunnies about this. It would definitely be our hope and aspiration to engage them and to bring their voice and feedback, and, and frankly, their dreams and aspirations into the project as well. We did not have the opportunity to do that within the course of the semester. And I think our hope is that, like, one, I think part of our aspirations and vision for the public realm is that it's not, it's not so like subdivided into like individuated private interests in the way that sometimes we imagine property to exist, but actually to think about a continuum of public space within the city of Urbana that's part of everybody's co-ownership. And so I think this is just a very initial conceptual schematic design, and I think there was an aspiration there to think about how some of the design ideas could go beyond the, the parking lot and start to create new entry points and thresholds from different directions, including Bunnies parking lot, including Crane and Goose Alley, that, you know, this is part of, you know, going back to the Urbana Downtown Public Realm Study, it's part of a dynamic corridor that doesn't like have strict edges and boundaries. And so that's what you're seeing in the rendering, and that's the aspiration, but of course, if this was to, to move forward, of course, that would require really kind of meaningful engagement with all parties that are, that actually would touch and benefit from it and beyond.
All right, Chris?
Well, this is the luxury of having a world-class research university right next door to your town, and you have access to this brilliance and genius. I want to thank you very much for taking an interest in our town and imagining public space. And this is, you know, where art, architecture and design can facilitate economic development. Between the Rose Bowl and Bunnies and that whole area, I truly believe, and I think the city of, the village of Rantoul has proven this to be true, that arts, entertainment, and recreation is a major economic driver. And when you can enhance and invite the public to participate and enjoy the space, and it's just not a music venue, it is an everything venue because there is essentially park space, and so thank you for incorporating and seeing the bigger picture. Still need a mural on that west side of Bunnies. But anyway, but I, thank you for doing this. I don't know what else to say. We're going to need your help in South Vile Road, so if you could meet us there at September 7th at 1 o'clock.
I'm looking forward to the block party very much. Very much looking forward to that.
But there's a lot of places and spaces in Urbana, opportunities for, you know, creative ideas and making it everybody's town and everybody's place. There's not endless money, unfortunately, but, you know, I don't know, good ideas generate interest, and with interest comes funding somehow, some way. So, thank you. I, I don't have a question really, but I just want to thank everybody for doing this, and, and let's do more of it, really, so.
All right. Jay, did you have anything?
I mean, I agree, it's cool, and thank you. So I feel like what I would say has been said, but this is, it's really nice to see this collaboration between the university and, and our community outside of the campus too, right? I think so often we put up artificial barriers, and the reality is that the university's part of our community, right? So it's, it's awesome to see this collaborative approach, and, you know, for all of the students who worked on it especially, like, you know, for you to be up here presenting to city council, like, that's, that's...
Thank you.
I was going to swear. It's awesome. So, yeah, just appreciate all the hard work, and, you know, as Chris said, unfortunately, we don't have unlimited money, but it's great to see great ideas coming to the table so we can think about where we want to go as a, as a city. So thank you.
Thank you. If, could I?
All right, I, I do have a couple of questions too, if that's okay.
Please.
Did you have something to follow up to what Jay said?
No, I just wanted to say that, you know, I think, while this wasn't the focus of our work here, I think projects like this also are, like, these are projects that can happen incrementally and that don't have to happen all at once, and I think it's, it's our job and I charge the students to, to think big and to come up with a big vision. And, and I was actually super excited with how the Urbana Public Realm team, who was part of the process, encouraged and frankly applauded that. So I want to give a big thank you to Urbana's Public Realm team, which in the case of this project included Kevin Garcia, included Vivian Krishnan. And while she wasn't here yet, I want to also thank Olivia Jovine, who has been very generous about the, making herself available for future partnerships. And as an Urbana citizen, I mean, I'm an Urbana citizen first and foremost, an architect and a professor second, but like this is something that I hope can be part of an ongoing incremental conversation, and, and I hope like that we can be stewards of a much longer-term partnership about how the built environment, and specifically the public realm in Urbana, can be second to none. But I apologize, James?
No, it's okay. I do have, I do have a couple of questions.
Please.
And I will say downtown needs park-like space. This, this fits that. There are other places where I've thought about that as a possibility. This, this is as good as any of those. If you could roll back to the, the more detailed overhead view?
This one?
The one that actually shows the parking spaces a little bit more detail. I think it's one, that one.
This one?
So I heard you say 4,500 parking spaces. Are those 4,500 public parking spaces or total?
No. That's total. That includes, that includes, that includes city-owned parking spots, that includes private parking spots, that includes on-street parking spots, that's aggregate. I think it's, it's my understanding that the city-owned parking spots are closer to about 1,300, 1,350, based on information that was in the Urbana Downtown Public Realm Study.
And when you said 45 spaces, you know, 1% right of, of that number, you were talking about the stuff to the west of Bunnies, or were you including the stuff inside the dash line? So you were including?
I was including only, when I said 45 or 46, I was talking about the parking spots that, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but in the two lobes of parking lot that are immediately north of the Rose Bowl.
But does the design that we saw the renderings of include occupying part of the parking lot that is east of Bunnies?
It included activating it with paint, but not removing the parking.
Okay, that, that, I will tell you, there will be a lot of excitement about this, a lot of it will be positive. I'm curious if you went back and looked at any of the city meetings where we voted on activating the parking lot?
We did.
And looked at the public comment.
We did look at some of those public comments.
Because I, I do know that what we'll hear about...
Yes.
...as this goes forward are from some businesses, which we heard from then, and we decided to go ahead at that point. But what we'll hear, one of the things we'll hear about from the public is that it looks like there's a lot of parking around the center of activity, but it's mostly private parking. And so I don't know if you talked about in your, in your thought exercise, how to encourage private parking ownership to be a part of an activation like this, because we're, we're seeing it right now. We're feeling it, particularly along the Broadway corridor, where there's a lot of places people want to go, and, and not as much public parking.
Yeah.
A lot of private parking.
Yeah, I mean, this is definitely, we don't have a magic solution to what you're asking, and it's definitely something that we discussed in our, in our studio and with the stakeholders and, and city partners, and, and, yeah, I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a magic solution. I do know that, I think, I think, and Jake, you can, you can attest to this, I think at, at some point, we were in our proposals, we're like, oh, well, we will, you know, we'll keep, we'll activate the surface with, we'll activate the surface artistically, we'll make it more of a space that can be activated with programming, but we'll keep some more of the parking. And in fact, it was, I think, our stakeholders, both business owners and the Public Realm team, that encouraged, like, let's, let's really imagine what it's, what it means to go all the way and really make a dedicated space for people and not for cars. And there definitely would, like, to do this, like, this would require a public-private partnership and a lot of buy-in from, from private owners who own, you know, quite a sea of parking in downtown Urbana. So yes, you're absolutely right, like, there's an issue with, it's, it's not an issue with a number of parking spaces, it's an issue with how those parking spaces are allocated and how they are distributed between public and private ownership, and what that means for the private owners of some of those parking spots, which account for, you know, easily two-thirds of the total parking spots available.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if you've watched the emergence of what downtown Champaign has done?
Sure, we're watching that closely.
But there have been, there was a, an initial vision that was put out there that took the entire space there in that triangle and made it into a, a green space. That, that didn't survive the conversation because of demands like parking and other, other issues, but I, you got to put that possibility out there of what you could do if you go all in, and then find a place that people can come together on.
And I think that's part of the incremental approach that like, I think, in my professional experience as a practicing architect, but also, I think, just like doing community engagement work in other places too, like, I think there's a scenario of this... work in other places too, like, I think there's a scenario of this where, I mean, we've, we've already done phase one, like, phase one's already done. The Rose Bowl has proven that from May to October, that like, this is a success and that, you know, of course, it's, it's mostly centered on them, but like, that there is a kind of public appetite and I think a buy-in from other businesses that what they're doing there works. So, like, the next step is, all right, let's, let's see what happens if before, you know, way before we turn anything permanently into people's space, that we start to activate a bigger sphere, that we start to work out and imagine both through, I think, public art strategies, through environmental graphics strategies, through even like changes in the pavement that still permit cars at, at certain times, but that make it clear that this is different than like everyday asphalt. There's something different about this surface that signifies a space of community. Like, that's a phase that I, that's a middle phase, I think, of development that happens before like tearing out all the parking lots and putting in permanent plazas, that can continue to sort of, I think, prove to local businesses that, that this has merit, that this is something that ultimately will stimulate their own business when there's more activity and more critical mass of people gathering downtown, even if they have to park slightly farther away.
All right, thank you. Any, any other questions? We sure do appreciate you bringing this to us and thanks, thank the class for their work.
Yeah, thank you to all of my students, you know, at least nine of which couldn't be here today. And thank you to all the council members and to Mayor Williams for making time to hear this. And we have a physical model at the entrance to the room that we encourage you to check out that the students made.
Joseph, we'll see you Sunday.
Yes, I look forward to it. On Philo Road. Future Architecture Studio on Philo Road Partnership.
One to five, I'll see you Sunday.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I will now call for public comment if there is any. I don't see any, we don't have any letters to read? All right, then we can move along to staff reports. Is this a staff report or is this? Discussion, okay. I'll check on that. We don't have any new business and we're here at the discussion.
All right, good evening, everyone. So, what you should see in front of you is a list of our surveillance technology and/or database that the city of Urbana is using. Just far to your left on that document, just want to make sure it's very clear as far as departments, we have CD for Community Development, UFD, Urbana Fire Department, PW, Public Works, HRF, Human Resource and Finance, IT, Information Technology, and UPD, Urbana Police Department. From there, what we've done is we've provided department, the database or tool itself, we have identified the owner or vendor, as well as the purpose of these items. This is quite a long list here for you today and what we're hoping is that you have opportunity to look through it. And we don't feel like this is the final list by any means. So, this is a, a start to this process and we would love for you to take a look at it. If you have any general questions that you would like us to take back to the departments, we'll be happy to collect those questions and either bring those back per department or even if we need a presentation to be done to go into more details in regards to these items, we'll do so. So, again, if you just kind of take a look at this and any questions, we'll be happy to take and we'll try our best to answer those on behalf of the departments, but ideally we believe we'll have to come back with additional answers.
Okay, Mary Alice?
Hey, thank you for this list and for the explanation. A couple of things and I, we've had this conversation, I've had it both privately and publicly with Grace in terms of, you know, what makes a database that is covered under here? And she was very clear with me at least, that a database has to be generated from a surveillance item. And so, as I look at this, I think some of these things are not generated by a surveillance device of some kind. So, I'll give you an example. The concealed carry licensed database, I don't think that's generated from a surveillance technology. I could be wrong, but, so I guess what I'm saying is, is that databases are quite expansive and, and so I think that tailored in terms of the, and please, anybody else, correct me if I'm incorrect on this, anything that's not gathered with surveillance technology doesn't fall within the purview of this ordinance, is my understanding of it. And that's why, so, let's see here, you know, Carfax for Police provides vehicle history reports and investigative data to police. Is that collected by surveillance technology? I don't think so.
Correct. And this, in this purpose, what we've asked is for all departments to turn in as much information as possible. We'll be happy to remove things off this list. But we wanted to be very transparent with you all that these are technology and databases that collects, you know, collects information of our citizens, possibly from one way or another. So, we are very happy to remove some of these things if we find they are not needed.
Okay.
Chris?
Yeah, I'm gonna disagree with you, Mary Alice. I think the, whatever it is, whether it be a database or a, whatever it is, it doesn't have to be a use of technology. It's, does it conduct surveillance period? Are you using whatever it is to conduct surveillance? And I see many of these items that could be and would be used for surveillance. And I just want to backtrack a little bit because I, there's been a lot of misunderstanding, at least in, in my realm, that somehow surveillance is bad. We're not necessarily saying that. And what Grace has put together is not a prohibition of any of these kinds of technologies. What we're trying to do for the betterment of the department's transparency and its accountability is put together a kind of oversight that lets the public know what the police are doing so that we can, and why they're doing it and what the results are of when they do it, so that we can have public buy-in to this world of surveillance, a real-time crime center, data gathering, data consolidation, instant, you know, I mean, I went to the Urbana, I mean, the UVI Police Department front desk to find out some information and the lady, and the clerk said, give me your name, and was able to pull up instantly my entire history with your, UVI Police Department, every interaction I ever had. So, we're living in a great new world now of digital archiving. And what we're trying to do in Urbana is provide a bit of an oversight so that people can trust that their police department is on the up and up, they are doing things for a good reason and in good intent. And I don't think trying to parse out what's technology, which is the surveillance, anything and everything can be used for surveillance. And if the police department provides such a comprehensive list like that, I feel better that they're coming clean and they're providing, you know, all the tools available to their, at their disposal. So, thank you for the list and I think this is a good point where we can make a sound decision. Thank you.
Mayor Williams?
Yeah, I was gonna, just kind of piggyback to what Mary Alice was saying. It was, I think the thought was to give more, right? To give as much as possible than, rather than not having, you know, enough. That was, that was all I was gonna say.
I want to give Jay a chance to weigh in because she hasn't had a chance yet.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm still kind of mulling it over, but I do want to express my appreciation for this list. This is something we've been asking for, for a long time and city staff got it done very quickly this time around. So, I really appreciate seeing, not only from the police department, but technologies that could be considered surveillance in other departments too. And I, I think this is the value of continuing to have this on the agenda. This gives us time to, to mull this over before we take any further action. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm gonna say a couple of things and we'll go back to Mary Alice and, and that is, yeah, I, I think this helps from a standpoint of knowing what's out there. I've got to totally agree with Mary Alice that I think there are things on here that, that we could probably easily say don't belong on here, like the third-party administration of worker, workers' compensation cases. I mean, that's, that's data, but it's not surveillance. And if, my concern is this started out as a review of surveillance technology and I want, I, I'm going to try to keep it from being about databases. Because if, one of the things I really found useful in the Oakbrook example is they did spend some time and looked like they were informed on the distinction of what they were really concerned about and what did need to be in the portfolio. And so, there are a lot of things on here, Chris, that, that fall into that category of the result of surveillance. I totally agree with that. But there are some things that are on here that are not, that we'll be, hopefully be able to say, this isn't a part of what we're trying to accomplish. And I, I think one of the, one, an interesting conversation we can have is like the fire department's use of drones. One of the, you know, a drone that is connected to the network and is used to observe crowds, yeah, that, that can be in a situation where it's being used for surveillance, but a drone being used to observe what's going on with a fire in a way that we've never been able to before, because you can observe it from different directions. Those are, those are the fuzzy lines that we're gonna have to parse with this. And maybe it is better that when there are those fuzzy lines, they come for review and are identified as things that don't need to be considered. My challenge is that because they're gonna come for review, there's, there's an opportunity to deny a technology to a department that needs it to do things because of perceived risk as opposed to an actual risk. Because that does drive some of people's concerns here. There, there are things we should be concerned about because they're real concerns and then there are, there are less real concerns that people tend to get amped up about. So, those are my thoughts. Mary Alice?
Yeah, actually, I, I agree with you. I think, and I'm trying to figure out a way to kind of thread the needle here because I, I hear what Chris is saying, which is the public should be aware of the different tools and data that we are using as a course of business for the city. But at the same time, I feel like there are tools, I'll give you an example, MECTAD, right? MECTAD is something we cannot do fire and police without MECTAD. Should the city council have the ability to say, no, you can't use MECTAD? I, I don't think that's within our purview. So, I guess I'm looking at it through that lens, but I'm also trying to understand what Chris's desire is, which is to allow the public to understand what we're using. So, I don't know if we divorce and we have certain technology or databases that's just a regular part of doing work and having a list of them that, that we're using these things, but that's just part of the work that we do as a city versus here are things that, you know, might be, there might be cases in which we don't want it used in our city. And that's the bucket that we use in terms of evaluating what is the policy and the use case and, and so forth. So, I'm just trying to disentangle those two things. So, those are my thoughts.
Go ahead, Jay.
Yeah, I think, I actually think the drones example for the fire department and for folks who don't have it in front of them, the fire department is not currently using drones, they bought them, this has not been operationalized, but it's, we're using this as an example. And actually, some of the databases too, that's where the use policy comes in, right? I, I think it's very likely that we could have a standardized, you know, if it's a database that's not used to surveil people, there's, there's a standard policy, right? Say, we don't have to go into this further, this is what the purpose is, these are how we're using it. Similarly, with the drones, being able to say, these are the explicit purposes the fire department would use, these drones, right? That it's not for surveilling crowds, it's for use for fire, right? So, I do want to, I hear that piece of like, let's not, let's not make this too burdensome and I, I want to point us back to the fact that there would be use policies for any technologies that fit the definitions of this ordinance. So, you know, again, like, it is important that we think about some of these details, but just to recognize that there would be additional time for clarifying what is and is not allowable and try to avoid some of those situations of people regulating against concerns that might not be an issue for a given technology in a given context, right? Because I do want to go back to what Chris said. The intent of this isn't to say, here's what you can't use as part of the ordinance or can use, right? It's saying, these are the standards we will apply and then an individualized policy. And I know everyone's like, oh my gosh, there's so many things. But I think again, if it's a common purpose, we don't have to reinvent the wheel every single time something comes up. It could be like, oh, yep, it fits in this bucket, this is the policy that applies, we make the necessary changes and go from there. But like I said, I keep coming back to the drones example because I think that's a great example. I think there are a lot of situations I'd be very concerned about the city using drones, but, you know, checking on the status of a fire is not one of those, right? So, I think that's where that policy comes into place.
Thank you, Jay. Actually, thank you both, Jay and Mary Alice, because you, you've helped me see something that I think we could probably all agree with. This kind of disclosure should happen without an ordinance like this. I mean, we, there, there's nothing wrong with saying, the city of Urbana is going to document the data that it keeps and some description of the purpose of that data, which is what this is, right? And, and then the next step is, what are the types of usage that would be of concern that would need to come for expressed approval? And so, I think part of this conversation was to get this kind of disclosure and we should just make this kind of disclosure a part of our everyday life. I, I experienced this on campus. We have to document all of the data that we keep and have some idea of why we keep it and what its sensitivity is and how we should protect it. There's no reason why we shouldn't do this. I can hear our IT director kind of screaming a little bit now because it is a tough job to keep track of all of these things. But, but maybe that is the, the nuance that we need to bring to this, which is disclosure has to happen. The process for approval needs to be focused in this more specific area that we're concerned about. All right, any other feedback from staff?
I just had an observation. I'm gonna try to stay as far out of the substance of this as I can, but just in looking at the model ordinance and the things that are explicitly included as examples of surveillance technology and then kind of comparing it to some of the things that were included in this sort of, let's throw everything out there that's potentially even within the scope, particularly looking at software or platforms that are used by the general public, like social media, YouTube, search engines like that. It, it stood out to me that we list social media monitoring software, which is, as a specific example of what is surveillance, which would be a third-party tool we'd use to sort of passively or proactively monitor individuals or groups, right? And identify those things. And comparing and contrasting that to sort of common usage of commonly-used softwares or tools by the public. And maybe that there's a, a distinction in there in terms of how we're using it and making that clarification in our ordinance, if that's a way that we would want to narrow it. It stood out to me that there's a sort of a contrast between that example and just listing of like, we use Google to search for people, you know, in an investigation, that's kind of a, a common usage of a, a public domain tool.
Okay, Chris?
Matt, since you brought up the specific social media, wasn't it true that the city of Champaign often monitored social media to anticipate? of Champaign often monitored social media to anticipate where the problem spots and what the crowd sizes were going to be during unofficial St. Patrick's Day?
That's a, that's a good question. If you're talking about law enforcement, I don't have firsthand knowledge that that was the case. I suspect that's likely true.
I'm not, I'm not insinuating there were abuses. I'm just...
Thinking back, so, you know, I think you're all aware, like one of my former functions in Champaign was deputy liquor commissioner, so I have some exposure to the unofficial prep. I do recall, you know, sometimes CPD would come and say, yeah, we've seen X, Y, and Z on Reddit, you know, there's a lot of activity around this or what have you. So I'd say yes, that was something that happened from time to time. But that was human beings running a search, right, and not some third-party software tool that's constantly running, trawling and culling information.
Yes, Mary Alice.
So I have a question about just kind of the, how this ordinance would operate. And with, throughout the ordinance, there's a lot of times in which city council must vote by a majority vote to approve something. So whether it's the, the specific technology for each one, and there's a whole bunch of different lists, my question is to the lawyer, like what does that look like? Is that a resolution? Like I don't quite understand the mechanism that we would go through if we were to approve this stuff.
I think, I think that's a kind of an open question and something that would need to be resolved in, in the ordinance in terms of our existing processes and at what point in time and potentially how many times something would come before the city council. There's of course the initial idea of, particularly when you're talking about a new or novel technology that a department may want to propose, I would envision that idea needing to come before council as a general proposition before any pursuit of, you know, a vendor, any procurement would take place before you'd start down a road that you, you wouldn't want city staff to take a bunch of steps and spend time and resources before there's some general approval of the, of the concept or of the, the idea of the software. But then I can also see council having an interest in particular vendors as a possibility. So I think that's, that's an issue process-wise to resolve. Does council want to give a thumbs up to the, you know, just on the front end to the idea and approve the pursuit and procurement of X technology or are we, are we thinking about multiple steps? And I think that's, you know, that's up for debate and open to, you know...
But all of those instances, regardless of how many different levels we go deep, would that be a resolution? I'm just trying to understand what that mechanism is.
Clerk has something to say.
So I'm just gonna like briefly piggyback and I'm exclusively going to talk to like ordinance and resolution. So a model that we have followed for something similar, the liquor licenses within the city of Urbana, liquor licenses and the practices regarding those are set by an adopting ordinance. And when we wrote, rewrote that ordinance in that section of the city code, we amended it so that instead of having to write an ordinance to change city code every time a new business wanted to apply for a liquor license, we wrote into the initial ordinance that the liquor commissioner would retain a listing of them. And then anytime a business would submit an application for it, a resolution to amend that list kept by the liquor commissioner comes before council. So there is an actionable, traceable thing with a unique identifying number that is in records in perpetuity, but it isn't us having to contact MUNICODE and wait six months for them to update our city code on the website. So that is a model that I think works well presently for us with liquor licenses. It's a model that I hope to see replicated with other similar type things, but to your very specific thing, if this adopting thing is an ordinance that's in city code, future additions to a list could be done via a resolution.
So I would, I would say that is not unlike a zoning case or the changes we make to where stop signs are, right? That's, that's a list that we update by resolution, right? So it would be similar to that, potentially. Yes, Jay?
Thank you. I think those are really helpful examples and I also, James, I wanted to circle back to what you said earlier. I agree that this is something we should just be doing, but I also think it's easy to not do it if you don't have something that's prompting you to, right? So I think as we're looking at, at the ordinance, the draft ordinance, that's where the benefit of having a requirement in there comes into play because, yeah, I do think there are a lot of these things we're going to say, eh, this, this is this other bucket, we don't really need to have it on this list. I think there are some things that we might say, yeah, we want some general guidance and maybe it looks the same for a lot of these. And then I think there are some that are going to require real policies. But I, my only concern is if we're like, yeah, we agree, we should all be doing this and then, you know, it's two councils later, who's going to do it, right? So I would encourage us to continue to, to keep that requirement for this kind of thing as part of the ordinance too.
I would agree with that, particularly we, we change administrations, the next administration, hopefully a long time from now, a long time from now, will, may have a different feeling about this and so it should be a part of it, but it, but it's a simple part. Anything else? So now we're at the point where we can have council input and communications. Thank you for the list. Do I have any council members who would like to speak? Go ahead, Chris.
I, not to steal the mayor's thunder, but Sunday, 1:00, out there, and maybe you can give some specifics, mayor, if you like, but South Philo Road Extravaganza, I'll call it, and encourage everyone to come out.
Yeah, no, I will piggyback on, on what council member Evan said. Definitely encourage everyone to come out, the Philo Road Ahead Community Kickoff Block Party will be Sunday, 1:00 p.m., from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. We are going to have all of the, the city departments, everyone will, will be there. We're going to have Touch a Truck, free cone of ice, hot dogs, all the above for, for the kids and just grownups and entertainment, DJ Silky will be there. But, you know, most importantly, we are going to have community input, you know, we're going to have stations set up with every department. We want to hear from the people, we want to hear from the community members, stakeholders, everyone who is involved, who calls the city of Urbana home in particular. We want you there to share your thoughts, to share your vision, and this is, this is just the beginning of something very special for the city. So this is a moment that, that we're all going to be able to come together, we're all going to, to put our visions, ensure that we're all aligned as we move forward. So again, Sunday, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., please come out and you heard it, you will hear, you will see Professor Joseph out there as well, U of I student. So we're excited and looking forward to seeing everyone, so thank you.
All right. Other council comments? Mary Alice, will you take the chair?
Yep, I will take the chair and the chair recognizes James.
Yeah, I want to add my voice to the, to encouraging people to come out to Philo Road Ahead by coincidence, not by plan. St. Matthew Church and Solagracia Farm is having a fall festival starting around 10:30, or no, 11:30 that morning. So if you want to stop by and have fun there, they're going to have food trucks there and then wander on up to the kickoff block party. There'll be a lot, a lot to do on Philo Road on Sunday, so come on out and enjoy, enjoy the community that's going to happen that day. Thank you, Mary Alice.
All right, I will, you want me to close the meeting or?
You can, go ahead.
All right, with no further business before this committee, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.